United States, where America, to the Republic, which is tense, one nation, I don't know if you're alive. The universal, the teaching justice.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Zach.
Oh, go ahead and call this meeting to order. We need approval of the agenda, please.
It's like so moved, sorry.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
That'd be that.
Uh, we need approval of the minutes from July twenty ninth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve, in second rolls.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. First item on the agenda is secondary roads, good morning Zach, we have a utility permit in the department update.
Morning. Uh, just one utility permit. This is for some fiber installation, just once at Coon Rapids, uh, Casey Mutual telephone, um, just across the line, uh, trying to serve a couple of customers, so, um, nothing different than what has been proposed before, just adding a little bit more footprint to the territory, so. Any questions? Oh my God, can we approve, can we approve it? Okay.
Much in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you. First department update, um, just a little bit down by Manning, Manning intersection of M sixty six and, um, Turner Fortyth Street. They're continuing to work down there, they got the dirt work basically done for the intersection, they're working on putting sub base down, I think the plan still is to, um, start painting middle of this week. So things are moving along down there, don't have a estimated timeline on when they're gonna be done with that part of it, but obviously the intersection is gonna stay closed, um, going north anyway, for the rest of our shouldering project. And they're looking to get started this week, so, um, uh, good timing from that standpoint to try to piggyback off of that one and, and continue going, um, hopefully continue to have good weather and, and, uh, get a lot accomplished in a hurry.
Although there is a detour, we did have a complaint at the Republican meeting about the dust, so keep the dust control down, please.
Hopefully Mother Nature can help us out, we did put dust control down on both sides of the project in front of, uh, acreages and, um, some intersections that are busy, so hopefully that will help, uh, see what, see how things go, how the process goes, but, uh, it's that hopefully the construction goes quickly and
Yeah.
go from there, but, uh, it's a long ways around the detour, I understand why people take travel, it's just, uh, hopefully we can keep it safe.
So how long do they think this should be in progress? With good weather, I mean, it's all, I don't know whether.
Weather, I mean, I'd say six weeks. This, that's a, that's a guess.
October fifteenth is the firm day, right?
It's the firm day. So I have, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, the agenda is to approve the merit access concept plan, morning Jason, did you wanna touch base with us a little bit? I know everybody had time to read over the
Yep.
Plan, but do you have any other words you wanted to say?
Yeah, so, this is basically the same information that I presented to you guys, I think in May thirteenth meeting maybe, uh, sometime in the night. Um, in talking with the county attorney, he wanted me to put it into an actual concept plan of what all the details of what was gonna go on there, um, and have my board and this board approve it. So my board approved this exact plan at our July meeting. Uh, if there's any questions on it, but like I said, it's the same information that I presented previously, just put down on paper and planned, uh, if there's any questions, I mean, I can look through it again if you want, I know you got a busy agenda today, so if you want me to go through it, I can. Otherwise, if there's any specific questions, I can answer those too.
Just in case, if, if there's anybody interested in it, why don't you give us a thirty second rush over, can you do that?
Um, so basically, uh, merit access is surrounded by property owned by the King family. The King family is working on a river oxbo wetland restoration project on some of their property. Uh, basically, that's gonna include, um, restoring old river oxbows, some wetlands, making use of artesian logs that are on the property. Um, basically, it kinda comes down to a couple of things, there's a, a little piece of merit access, about eight, nine acres that sits out in the middle of their pasture, completely disconnected from the park. Um, we have no public access to it, it just kinda exists out there, it always has. Um, that piece of property would be included in their river oxbow work, um, so for them to complete the work, um, the NRCS, US Fish and Wildlife Service, they're kinda spearheading this project, funding the project, basically to do that work on, on that property, uh, it'd have to be in the King family's name. So basically, what they have requested is that the county quickly and deeds that property over to them, so this work can be done. Um, then in return, we will lease for ninety-nine years, twelve acres of timber on the north end of merit access, which would clean up our boundary line on the north end, make that a lot more easily navigable during hunting season and stuff, because right now it just goes through the middle of a flood plain timber. Um, so that'd be a lot easier to determine right where that boundary is at, so the county would get that, you know, leased for ninety-nine years at a dollar a year. Uh, so kinda tit for tat there a little bit, and then, um, once the river oxbow work, wetland work is done, on the south side of merit access, they would like to enter into a lease on that for the conservation board to manage that property as well, because they understand they don't have the knowledge and materials and equipment to manage it, uh, and it'd be a really unique habitat for Carroll County, uh, to manage, be available to public for public hunting, waterfall hunting, all kinds of stuff, so it'd be something that we currently really don't have a lot of in Carroll County, um, you need, a neat property to manage down the road, and we would um, enter into a contract with the King family on that, that states that once this work is done, um, we would take get a lease on that property for management. Yeah, that's kind of a.
It'd be private property, but access for.
Access, it would be public access, yes, and we have some other properties that we, that we lease, you know, for public, for public use, so it's not not a new concept, so.
Well, I think it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Right, yeah.
You probably work on this.
You're looking for approval, formal approval.
Yeah, so county attorney wanted me to put it in a concept plan, um, so everybody could review it, my board reviewed it at the July meet, their July meeting and approved it. So now I'm just presenting it to this board for approval as well, before he will.
I can make a motion to approve the merit access concept plan, thank you Jason, you did a lot of work on that side.
I'll click in a minute.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jay. Thank you.
All right. Item number three is to appoint a board of adjustment member, and we did have an applicant fill it out, um, Mary Witry.
Yeah, she, Diane Sturm is retiring, so Mary Witry applied to finish her term, which goes through for many quarters. Thanks Diane for, I think that was, this was her second, um, board of adjustment.
I'm making motion to approve Mary Witry, Witry to the board of adjustment.
I'll say.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
I thank Mary. I'm still my peeps, so.
All right, item number four is to discuss the, the GIS planning and zoning slash passports department and compensation. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
Little history here, Sarah was in the recorder's office doing passports, and that is now with your new position as the Carroll County assessor, we have to discuss what we're going to do with passports. Good morning, Riley.
Good morning.
You want me to keep going?
Yes.
Sarah also was our full-time GIS and P and Z department coordinator, and going from her position over to the Carroll County assessor, it was a win-win for Carroll County, not only because I think you'll do a phenomenal job, but you're willing to take over those roles and responsibilities into the assessor's office. So very rarely do we ever get a, um, frankie government, um, but so, this is her proposal, everybody had a moment to read this, so if she were to bring those, uh, GIS and P and Z, and obviously Riley, um, is going to help out in those scenarios as well, and I think, I think being cross-trained and having more than just one person knowing that information is huge and it's very beneficial. So there's a lot of win-wins here, um, she gave a proposal of what she would like to see for compensation and kind of the direction she would like to see that those areas go. Um, is there any questions by the board?
And basically we're backfilling her old position?
Correct. Would you like to discuss?
I, I sent my proposal, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything, um, I tried to do it as um, cost-effective to the county as possible, because to do a third-party vendor, it'll be very expensive, and, um, hiring to replace my position would be, you'd be looking at filling that role at the amount that I left at, if not more, so, um, that's, that's kind of how I came up with everything. Um, and Riley, I thank her for wanting to, to learn and do more, um, with the county, and I'm excited.
And it seems as though that, that sticking point that was raised about having I'll call it a conflict of interest, for lack of.
Shared responsibility.
shared responsibility seems to have been satisfied, so, um, once again, it's an opportunity for us to shrink things down, streamline things, uh, State Iowa's been a model for us, and I hope the county can continue to long after I'm gone, continue to look at ways to, um, to do this very thing. So it's gonna be just in salary alone is gonna be a significant savings, but I, I still see that there's gonna be so much more efficiencies created by, you know, using the same software and database.
Or avoiding a full-time employee ad.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the big takeaway.
I wore, I wore for little Sarah out on Friday, so, I'm, I'm satisfied with it, and so.
There's a lot more than just the salary, it's more than just, like, the average insurance.
That's the icing on the cake.
Do you want a motion on this?
No.
We probably should clarify too, so going forward, P and Z will be, and GIS will be from a different levy, because the assessor's salary is from also a different levy. So those would be segregated out, is that doable?
Yeah, yeah, um, I think you just need to make sure that, that hours are being documented. That would be the only thing I would question, because if anybody would come back and say you know, you just need to document it, which I think you already do anyway, so.
When you initiate the proposal, you're gonna talk of GIS, what about zoning there as well?
Um, I was going to leave zoning the same for now.
What do you think?
With, with me, um, for now, and then I figured after, um, Riley's going to start GIS kind of in January, we have that field work this fall, so I'm gonna have her really look at, um, GIS, kind of give her the basics of zoning, and then, um, like next, this, next fiscal year, she would probably do a little bit more zoning with me, um, so like this time next year. Um, and then I think that we would just split the salary that is, that is there, or talk about that at that time.
I thought I was concerned about, but the zoning was favored, okay.
If, if that's okay with the board.
That's how I see it.
It's gonna take a little time to cross-train her as well. Like Riley using her for the challenge when I was in there on the spray, so. I don't really have any question.
Why is Riley's, um, annual start January first, is it for training reasons?
Yeah, because she won't be trained on the GIS until January, um, we have that big, like I said, field work will start at the end of this month and probably go through the end of the year. Um, so I felt like starting it right away, you know, she wouldn't be doing that work right away.
Back to that documenting of ours, I think that that is critical, it, it's likely at some point to come up before the conference board,
Yeah.
you know, particularly budget time next year, and I think you're gonna wanna be able to validate that, and if on their behalf, maybe it won't come up, but, you know, if I sat on the mayor's or school board, I'd want them to.
So I have to give huge praise to Sarah, she does an honorable job with her hours, um, she sends it to me weekly, very detail-oriented, and she's, she's accountable for every minute, so, I do have that, and we did speak, I asked her to keep continually to do that, not for a micromanaging position, but just for a if the conference board would like to need the hours that we have. Great, great reference mark.
So are you still seeing a motion to do this, and then we also know we gotta talk about passports in just a moment?
I'd like to keep it with you, so.
Okay, perfect, that's fine. You wanna make that motion, or shall I, Mike?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the county GIS planning and zoning.
Yeah, I'll take it.
There's a motion in a second for the GIS planning and zoning. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. Motion here. Now to the second part of that discussion is passports. Obviously, with Sarah setting this new role, um, passports is probably gonna be one of the areas we need to discuss. We moved it into the courthouse full-time on the main level two years? About two years now?
Of January of last year, like.
Yeah.
About when I started.
And currently, if you computed your hours correctly, it's about four hours a week. Um, some busier than others, but if you were to do an average.
I, I would probably say more than four, um, just because you do have phone calls, conversations, um, you know, I, I jumped from like fifty phone calls a month to like three to four hundred phone calls, I guess a quarter, fifty a quarter to like three or four, um, and then people top, stopping up, so I would probably say you're looking at more of like the ten-ish potentially. Um, like I said, some weeks busier than others, um, you know, some weeks I was doing twenty-six passports a week, some weeks I'm doing four, five passports a week, so I mean, it does ebb and flow.
Were majority of those done by appointments?
Majority were done by appointments, yes.
What day do you think that is, uh, what days were your visits?
Probably your Mondays and Fridays, because if people are going to take off work, it's usually a Monday or a Friday. And then I think the Carroll schools have like one Monday off a month.
I mean, it's a board decision what we wanna do with.
You said last year there was six hundred and fifty, you did?
Uh, there's six hundred and thirty-four.
I was blown away by that number.
That was just brand-new passports, that does not include renewals.
How many renewals did you have or vote on?
We, we don't keep track of renewals, because we don't get any income from that, so, you know, unless I like sat down and tick-marked every single person I either talked to or pack, helped them package it up, I, I don't have that number.
I mean, renewals, they take time.
Yeah.
Fill out same application.
Uh, so essentially, they do fill out the same application, we do offer the photo as well, um, but like I said, it's hard to track those, because I don't have a, a spreadsheet of I helped so-and-so where I do with the new ones, because we do collect an, uh, acceptance fee, you don't do that with renewals.
So on a yearly basis, would you say the renewals are equal to the new one, or which one or more?
I would say your new ones are probably majority, um, but you do have a significant number of renewals, and, you know, along with renewals come questions, comments, you know, um, you only do it every ten years, so of course you wanna talk to the person who does them on a, on a regular basis.
You know, we talked about, you know, how our partner, New Opportunities, Professors are the one-stop shop. I think the county needs to be the same way, we need to, you know, I, I know that there's an option for it to go to the post office, I learned Friday that it's, they don't have to take it on, it's whether or not they wanna take it on. But I see this like we did with the driver's license stations, way back in my early terms. You know, we can provide a service for our constituents that needs to start here, and, um, you know, in talking with Carrie, and if she wants to have a word or two, too, she's here, um, they're willing to take it on and glad to take it on, and I I think there was a little bit of a kind of misunderstanding that it was deemed that we would only do them on Wednesdays, when they're not out in the field. But, no, that's, that's the only, that's, you can explain this better, but it, that was when they would allow walk-ins, that they would do them as long as they're in the office, Monday through Friday, as long as they're there, and they'll even stop doing what they're doing to accommodate you know, that customer, I'll call them, and, but, but the Wednesday thing was only where you could just freely walk in and get it, which I still think that's, that's a great plan, and, you know, looking at their website, I mean, it clearly, in bold red, says, you know, hey, we might be out in the field. I mean, when someone's going to the website to start the process anyways, and they pull up at least in this case, whether it's under environmental or environmental health, then they're clearly gonna see that walk-ins are still available, but the best way to do it is on a Wednesday, the one where there's gonna definitely have coverage there. And I realize it's a little bit cumbersome not having it geographically located, logistically within the courthouse, but again, we're, we're serving so many other clients with VA and public health and everything else over there, I mean, I think it's pretty widely known that, that, that's the county access, or the access, so I don't know, I'm, I'm, you wanna have a word, you wanna have something to say, but.
Well, you know, we moved that over here to courthouse, that up on the upper floor to make it more handicapable, accessible to the public. And I like to see that, that we keep it more accessible to the public. The other thing, I think, uh, some of your point, yeah, everything we do at the county is not gonna be profit generating, we need to provide service. And I think this is one where we do, I don't think if there's someone comes in and wants a passport, uh, we let, we service them whenever we can, I don't know that if they set up an appointment, that's fine, but I don't know that should be the rules and thing. Um, I think we need to find a different, someone in that courthouse here to have it, and I have, and my point, point would be to have access on the first floor myself. So it's accessible, especially to handicapped people, I think you can walk in real easy and get it. Um, so, I mean, that was part of our reason why we moved it over here, and when we did do it, that was.
Location inconvenience.
Yep. And I still do that.
I got the.
And I, and I don't know if there's any other department that is willing to take it, I mean, side departments. What's that, Tony?
By all records, cannot.
Yeah.
That's where we ran into trouble, that weekend. We've all taken a turn and then been told we're allowed to do it.
Please.
Mind? No, I'm just gonna stand, you're fine, um, I know, you know, the convenience and the accessibility, you know, w- we've got the veterans over in our building, our building is accessible. Um, and we have, already have the experience in doing it, we encouraged, uh, app, uh, appointments, just like Sarah did, so, um, even though that building is, you know, we would just do a lot more advertising to let people know we're there, but it's, it is accessible. Um, and we are not looking to add any additional employees to the county or any additional salary increase, we would basically just be taking it over at no additional cost to the county, so.
When Sarah was a candidate for the assessor, I used the term that she was the only applicant that was plug and play. I see this as a great deal of similarity, it's the only one that's plug and play. They could start yesterday, well, it's Sunday.
It would take a little bit, because we gotta go through the US Department of State to get everything.
You gotta figure out, but I mean, they're plug and play. Not much for me to think about, but we're, we're bored to say.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any other departments that are interested in taking a lot of them or not. Yeah, has anybody had any discussion they had done on?
Don't think the treasurer's office was wanting to, I don't think the recorders.
She's back here, sorry, both of them are here.
Happy to take it on, we have to legally hire someone because of that federal law, but happy to do that if that's what you do. There will be some back and forth, probably, in the other building, because a lot of times they need their birth certificate, so if we send someone over there for passports, they send back the birth certificate, and we send it back, you will run into that, that this maybe it is what it is, but that will happen.
And that was one of the reasons we put it on that floor.
Yeah, we, there was that issue prior too, when we were not doing the photos, when the recorder's office and the treasurer's office had those programs, and they were not doing the photos, they'd have to go over to Walgreens or Walmart or somewhere else and get the photo and then come back anyway, so. Curious, Carrie, this is just, this is just me talking up mouth. Who would, who would be implementing some of the certain, most of, is it, who's gonna go and servicing of that?
As far as between Sherry and I?
Yeah.
Um, probably Sherry, but I would definitely be there.
So I was thinking as an option, like, and I don't wanna go away with not having it every day, but we might have to entertain that. Would it be an idea to do Monday and Friday that Sherry would come over here for a half-day in the afternoons, and there's room, we have some room in small offices? That way, they can still get their birth certificate, it's still here, accessible, I mean, I'm not saying that your building isn't accessible, I'm just throwing out some ideas here.
Um, I'm sure it would be possible, it would be something we could definitely work something out. Um, but again, if she's only here, you know, she's gonna wanna take a Monday or a Friday off as well.
Yeah.
So then I would have to do it. But it's those people who just don't realize that they should make an appointment, can make an appointment, um, you know, we're just gonna show up someday and then be disappointed, because there's nobody here to help them. But we could still help them, because obviously in order to do that, we would still have to have certification and a facility ID number. Um, in those cases, they may be sent over to us anyway, rather than be sent away entirely, we just don't wanna see anybody have to go thirty minutes in any other direction to get a passport, when all they have to do is give us a call and make an appointment with us.
And you talked about the treasurer's office, we are also, you know, we issued driver's licenses, so when we were appointed to be the backups, there's two people around my office that cannot issue driver's license except for that, because we can't intermingle.
Intermingle with the vital records, right, yeah.
So basically, your office is bound to.
Well, because if we would do it full-time, we'd be probably the same situation, Monday, Friday, I mean, they usually, Sarah, most people come first thing in the morning, late, late afternoon, and that's kinda like our busy time balancing and not balancing, we do a rotation of balancing, so, I mean, if you have two people that can do it full-time, Monday through Friday versus someone being able to be backups, I mean, I, I personally would rather go to a person that can do it full-time.
Can I ask why, why, why do we have to go, we need to get a passport, or to renew a passport?
To renew a passport, you told them on yourself that if the original passport, we have to go through a pay agent.
Oh, you're talking about to start the original one?
Yeah. But we take, we still take lots, we still take lots of phone calls every day about passports, I mean, we don't we, the questionable one, we do direct to Sarah, but in most questions we can answer, we'll try and answer them ourselves with the treasurer's office, because we used to do them before we took over driver's license. So there's a, myself and Brooke do know how to issue passports, so we can.
I can't, I can't remember when I issued, and it's been twenty years ago, but, but I got it online.
Renewals can be done online. Renewals can be done online.
But not the original?
No, yes, if you come in for your first passport, you have to bring in all your original documentation to an agent.
No. Yes, if you come in for your first passport, you have to bring in all your original documentation to an agent to sign in.
What are your thoughts?
Well. I feel like it'd be.
Yeah, I don't like it. I don't like it leaving here, but they are the best options for us right now, I think.
Yeah, hiring somebody exiled.
That's awesome.
We are a small county and consolidation resources.
You say you still got room over there for you. Do you do it in your office?
If I can oversee it, it shouldn't be over there because of the vital records and the federal law was asked.
It should not be.
It should not be if I can oversee it again.
Well, then we should even move back over to session then.
We need a desk. We have an extra desk.
How how you like this um? How do you like Sherry over there?
How utilized is she?
Yeah.
She does all of our water testing and well plugging.
Like, how how many days a week is there someone not there like her?
It's everything environmental health does is when we're called to be sent out. So I can't really answer that good. Except in the winter time. In the winter time, we're both almost there all the time because. People aren't doing septic and well plugging in the winter typically. So anywhere from December to March. You got two of us there majority of the time. It's that April to. October, November, where we're being called out to do. Other things.
Are we going to be very heavy, John?
Um, I would like to start the process because it'll take about two weeks, if not longer, to get that number for the new facility. Um, and I'd like to, you know.
And then should we wait it like to a couple weeks?
To figure out where it's going?
Yeah.
Well, then, like I said, you're going to be pushing it back another two weeks.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I think we need to look at some options here logistically. I myself.
That in my mental health sounds like a. They can do it. The location is what we're. To bring Sherry over here twice a week or whatever. It is. It's an incredible inefficient use of her time. I mean, just just to pack up and head over. It's 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 not very realistic, but again. I I don't mind you guys, you know, poking holes and things in the what ifs. And we, again, the end goal is we we want the very best service for our people, right? And I think all of us can at least agree with that, but now we're heading in different directions and all of the what ifs. Like I said before, this one's ready to go.
Yeah.
But and and.
First was pulling up.
Two.
A lot of them run back and forth for those documents. I went through that process and I know that's what that's like.
Here's the deal. Two years ago, right before I got on, there's a reason you guys or whoever's on board moved here and left it here and put it on the first floor. So that's why, I mean, it's perfect to go over there. They can do it tomorrow, but they went through all this already, you know?
But and again, I wasn't as dialed in with the happenings at that at that time. I had my own fights to fight, but. It's my understanding that this board had some belief that they were only open on Wednesdays. And wasn't that much of the problem? And that's not the case.
Well, the problem, I think, was probably there's times you're nobody there and somebody went down for passports, so it wasn't there. But I think that my point now is by having on that same floor is that especially these people. Elder, whatever, if they ain't got them original documents they need, they're going to be chasing back and forth here between. The fricky building in here. And I that's why I like to see it stay here on the first floor. Just for to me, the problem.
That doesn't happen as much as you think, to be honest.
I have heard a lot. I've heard a lot of comments on that.
It does happen, but. For the most part, they bring in the documents they need.
But I mean, a lot of them don't always think of that. Or they think they have the right document. They got some. Uh, birth certificate, then not a true.
Well, we had people that would show up with their credit card and we'd have to send them home to get their checkbook because they wouldn't we wouldn't take credit cards either. So.
Website says right on there what you need and.
Mark, to your point, I I can agree. They're ready, go plug in. You can do it. I know I have no problem with that. I I the part I struggle with is not having it in the courthouse, but I also can understand from your perspective, not having somebody drive back and forth or and not having Sherry pack up and come over. I don't know. I think I think we're struggling with the the location.
I'd love to have it in the courthouse. In a perfect world, it needs to be here. But we don't have a perfect world. We don't have a perfect situation unless you want to pay somebody eighty grand a year and he underutilized. That's the only other option you got here, period. Or you farm it up, which is definitely the wrong thing to do. I don't know what we're talking about. I really don't. Sorry, Jean. Well, I love it. I don't think, first of all, I don't think it needs intoxicating grams. Sixty.
Through my travels, there's a lot of places where you can get passports. It's not at the courthouse. Like throughout the country, it's not like, I mean. It it's in a building. It doesn't necessarily not in the courthouse building. You know what I mean? It can. It it's just in a building and yet sometimes it requires you to travel, but there's lots of places that it's not in the courthouse.
So you mean to tell me you don't have room in the courthouse for the civil office or what? No, we got room. We just don't have personnel. Without hiring somebody. Here. And again. It Sherry could come over. I mean, she obviously could spend every morning over here if you wanted to. It's not very realistic, but I mean. Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about, but.
Ultimately, to me, what it comes down to is if you need a passport, you have to have a passport. You'll you'll figure out where it is and you'll build there.
Are you still willing to do? Obviously, I'm all for appointments. I think appointments are a must. Why wouldn't you want an appointment? Because you know you're going to be seen at one o'clock in the morning.
Driver's license still needs appointments, correct?
We we take walk-ins.
You will take walk-in.
But it's still it's still knowing when you go get your hair done, when you go to the doctor, when you go anywhere, it's all appointment based. But you know, you're well, maybe not doctors, but. You you know you're going to be seen at that time. I have no. What are you still willing to do Monday through Friday?
We will do Monday through Friday. We'll take appointments. We just and and we can add a walk-in day. It used to just be Wednesday. You want to add a walk-in day? We can do that. I mean, we're willing to do what we need to do to make it work, but it still has to be realistic for the other job that we have.
And to be honest, my office, we were never asked if we would take it full time. So I would have to go back to my office and talk to them. Well, the problem is it's not it. When you do the hours, it's not a full time job. You know what I mean? There's only so many hours that you spend on a passport. That's why we can't want hiring somebody who would be super. Unrealistic and not. Conservative.
Well, that that's why it'd be nice if you would fit something where.
Yeah. It's just hard with your office, all the elected offices in this courthouse. It's just hard because of the vital records. And and we understand that and we respect that, but. Um, I think we're spinning wheels here. So if nobody can make a decision, we're either tabling it or.
I think we need to move forward.
Okay.
You want to move forward?
Absolutely.
We need to do something.
No, I'd I'd like to see if there's some other options out there. Someone where that we could utilize somebody to do it.
I think we're spinning our wheels. I mean, we've got lots of space in the courthouse. We've got lots of people in the courthouse, but we can't dual source the people. They're just doing records. So, I mean, we're kind of in a pinch. The frickin' building is not that far away. I don't like. Yeah, and that was the reason we put them on the first floor. We're going away from what the.
I'll make a motion to move passports over to GAS or to uh Brownland Services.
Second.
Your convention in a second. Any more discussion?
You're talking moving over that building over there?
Yeah, tricky building. Don't work. We'll move it back someday.
It's the best cost. I mean, they've got the people. They've got the resources.
It's not. It's not what I want to do. We don't have all the resources to do it.
So the revenues of that, where that one is that going to go to public health or go back to the general fund?
It goes in the general fund.
Yeah.
General fund. Is there any more discussion? If not, we'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, you two want to kind of get together? I know there's some stamps and stuff that need to be in the camera. Yeah, well, you'll have by the US Department of State and let them know in the following. Uh, Sarah, if we continue to do it until we get that number. So once she, once we get our uh facility number. Then she'll have to release hers to the US Department of State. They know transfers that they. Thank you very much.
So then Joe Sherry will be the two provincial people.
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Carrie. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss the two mile zoning. Um, I want to make it real quick before we go into the discussion. This is a board supervisor's discussion. Um, I feel everybody in this room has made their points very well. So we know what you guys' intention is wanting to be. This is going to allow us as a board to discuss how to come to. An idea of what we want to do going forward. There'll be no motion because you can't have a motion. This is a twenty eighty with the city. So. This is going to come up to a consensus of what the board supervisors are going to go meet with the city council members about. So we're, once you get three, you get three people on this board that you feel like this is the route we want to go. That's the direction we're going to go. I don't want any name calling, pointing or anything like that, or I will ask you personally to leave. So we're going to open it up. First off, I want to ask Sarah to give just a little bit of an education on. Two mile zoning, and that is strictly all we're talking about is hundred percent two mile.
Um, so thank you, Steph. Uh, the two mile.
Please speak up.
Sorry.
Are the are the mics working here?
They're still on.
We can't hear you back here.
They're still being.
Well, they're not working.
Not yet. You heard correctly.
Sarah, you stand up. Maybe over there might be best like over there, everybody. That's okay.
So, um, sure, grab some notes over here. Of course. All right. So, uh, the city of Carroll and Carroll County entered the two mile. As we all know, we had the. The talk about it several several times. Um, so one thing I kind of did was I went through what was different between the city and the county, what was the same. Um, when I compared the two, um, the biggest thing would probably just be the cost of the building permits in that area, which is substantially higher. Where you do get that um building inspection in the county, you would get a state person to inspect, but they're only inspecting. The electrical, they're not inspecting the whole structure. Um, so that would be kind of the difference in the cost of where the city and the county are at. Um. And that's like I said, that's a benefit. Um, when you're looking at the city setbacks, you know, they're just a little bit larger in the rear end of the parcel. Um, but they're actually closer to the road in the county. So our rear setbacks are twenty in the county. The city is fifty in that two mile. Um, county is sixty foot off the road right away where the city is fifty. So, I mean, we have some give and take between the two. Um. The city newly adopted that rural business enterprise in their A, um, the agricultural two district, um, which is. Similar to the county's um rural enterprise. Um, if you go back and look at our handbook. And I have it marked there, um, except they actually allow fifteen employees where the county allows nine. So so there's a lot of similarities between the two. Um, and like I said, some differences. So that's kind of where I'm at with with the two um in my research.
So go back to the the fifteen and nine again?
Um, so when you're looking at this newly adopted rural business enterprise for um the city. In their A two district, if you look um in their code, it enter it says a rural enterprise shall employ no more than fifteen um. Employees, including both full and part time.
I am G.
I am G. Thank you. I didn't know if anybody had that. And if you're looking at the county's rural enterprise. Description. It says it's it's fourteen point zero two point three sixty, which defines our rural enterprise. Um, which is a small business, which is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the premises for a dwelling. The rural enterprise shall only be allowed in the unincorporated areas of the county, but not located in the boundaries of the unincorporated villages, including but not limited to Mount Carmel. Maple River or Roselle. The rural enterprise shall employ no more than nine full or part time employees. Um, so I think that's kind of an area that people were were questioning. So when I compared the two, the county actually has nine versus the fifteen that the city allows. Other than that, they're like very similar um highlighted things. The city actually allows country clubs where the the county could be a board of adjustment meeting. Any questions for the supervisor?
Not here.
I want to thank you, Sarah, also. I had to go back to nineteen fifty and print me a map of Carroll. Robert and the two mile and some of the. Growth that we have seen. It's rather interesting to see the amount of growth. And I will say, yes, population probably hasn't had a huge increase. But geographically, the space that we have covered in the last so many years, it's. Pretty neat. So if you guys want to take a look at that, you can. Does anybody want to make comments into reference? I feel the board supervisors do want to. Do something with this two mile, whether it's to enclose it to a smaller space. I don't know if I necessarily, I haven't gotten the feeling that we want to go away from having some kind of zoning. But I do appreciate. So just a question, Sarah. So if we went away altogether with the two mile. What happens? Like, what what would be?
So absolutely no two mile, both city and county, very carefully.
Yep.
Um, there would still be a state mandated urban transition area, which is a quarter mile out of any incorporated limits, which would have to go through both the city. And the county, um, but it would be a county building permit. So you would still have that lapse. Um, you would have to wait until it approves the city to come back to the county.
For a quarter mile.
For that quarter mile, which is required by the state code.
Do we have to come up there to speak or what?
We're not allowing speaking at this time.
Pardon?
We're not allowing speaking at this time.
Will we? Will we at the end of the discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. So once again, if should the twenty eighty terminate, there's still going to be a quarter mile. No matter what, the next state code.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And you describe what the process would be if anybody's.
And we've done that recently. The state of Roselle, somebody put in a building permit. Right outside city limits within that quarter mile.
Okay.
Right.
And and the city of Carroll's footprint is still moving. It it's moved, you know, with the Ziegler cat. Annexation, it's moved with the Choice Auto Annexation, uh, it's moved with the Kofi Annexation. It's still moved. It's going to presumably continue to still grow. I know there's another one that's out there too that. Could change here somewhat shortly as well. Um, I know there's still a lot of discussion about development in and around Tella. Um, which is within it. So, I mean, you know, to think that this is static is an error. Because it's going to continue to grow. And so everybody's got to be mindful of that. And then, as I mentioned to one of our um guests here today. Um, involuntary annexation can always occur as well. Uh, I I'm not a fan of it, of course. Um, but, you know, it the the city of Carroll can. You know, reach its extent within voluntary annexation as well. I mean, I always, of course, prefer them to be voluntary, but. Those things can still occur. So. I I got a question about skipping any turns here or anything, but um. Should this thing terminate? And and I I thought that I understood it from deputy county attorney, or maybe I'm maybe I'm wrong. or maybe, maybe I'm wrong, so correct me if I am, but a belief that the twenty-eighty has to be terminated on agreement of both parties?
That was my understanding.
Okay. If.
My understanding. The way I'm reading this, and I'm just a dumb old car salesman,
but I'm reading this, if I can just pull it up. Um, I just lost it. Here it is. The, the one that's dated of ninety-three. And I think I got the right one. I think it's, unless there's another floating around out there. But if you look at the item where it says duration, item number seven, duration of agreement. The paragraph below the section that is quoted, it says, "This agreement shall remain in effect perpetually unless dissolved by ordinance or resolution of either the city or county." Once again, it says, "Agreement shall remain in effect perpetually unless dissolved by ordinance or resolution," which would require, I guess, of either the city or the county. And I make either is pretty explicit.
Either back out there?
And, and again, I'm not the attorney that paid four hundred bucks an hour to do this.
But that's our, our assistant attorney did say that.
Oh, I thought he said that it was not. I think it had, it had to be terminated by both.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. That's why I understood.
Did anybody else miss anything? Or am I not?
I understood in the, it was a joint, it was a joint, the twenty-eighty was a joint venture.
I didn't remember reading, though. I'm no lawyer, so.
But I mean, isn't that what that says?
Probably. Can you read number seven?
Seven, and it's the second paragraph.
Okay.
If you got to over the other one, in addition, it's number eight.
This is the nineteen ninety-three.
Number eight.
And no amendment can be made. Yeah, but. I think we've been professing to the public that I, well, but it's, it, it, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's good. Maybe I got the wrong one, but I mean, it's the one I'm pulling up. Again.
Well, I, I am open to the idea of having a joint order.
Okay, so I'm, I got the wrong one. And I, I was looking for the other one, so I apologize, but I.
I am, I am open to the, to have a joint order. There's a building permit that is, uh, denied, that would be an appeal process of having re, equal representation from the city council and the supervisors to appeal that permit to.
Which are elected people. That was one of the things was representation.
I mean, I'm for that, but I'm not for equal representation. It's our money. It's our county money. I think it should be through supervisors and two city councils.
And I think most decisions that went there, if it was a five-person order, it'd be five, zero, or zero minus.
So if I'm gonna compile thoughts here really quick, a board that would give.
Two-mile joint council.
Big look view.
That would give the board supervisors more authority to overrule any permit that is denied.
Just have an appeal process. There would be appeal to that.
What would this board be named?
Two-mile joint council. I don't know. Right now, it goes to the city council. Carroll City Council. That's if your permit is denied by the Carroll Building Department.
Okay.
Right now, it goes to the two-mile P and Z, and then it goes to the city council. Or it's still going to two-mile P and Z. And then come to a two-mile joint council.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the most common sense approach.
Yeah.
So there, there's a, so, we were, we were given, um, the concerned registered citizens of Carroll County two-mile radius with a hundred and twenty signatures on here. Um, there's four points on here, and three of the four are invalid. The one, the one at the end is, is correct. Um, I do think that, um, I have a map drawn here, and the yellow is the city of Carroll's, um, city limits. And outside of that is all the miles that two-mile contains. Uh, the city of Carroll consists of six point five mile roughly, six point six if I did my math right. Uh, the two-mile agreement controls twenty-eight point five miles. Uh, in that two-mile, we have a two-hundred-and-eleven acreages, two-hundred-and-thirty-one farm parcels, twenty-nine remote businesses with no homes attached. Um, my, I would like to get rid of everything that's in red, which would essentially go down to one mile. And, uh, that's every parcel that has nothing touching it, as of right now, we're bordering it. That would bring it down to, uh, the city would control eleven point five miles, which is a little under half of what they consist of now.
But also utilizing a two-mile joint council, so it.
Correct.
So the board supervisors could have more authority over.
On anything within that one mile. Correct.
So what do the people in the red gain by? Do they gain anything by?
Yeah, they, they, uh, come to the courthouse for permit and not to the city. One game.
Oh, that's right.
Also, in that deal, there was, you know, the first bullet point on the concern citis, registered citizens, um, there's currently no county permit fees. There is. We have permit fees just like they do, so that does not change.
They may have heard me thinking the city of Glidden about their two-mile.
I don't know. I've heard from no one that's in support of keeping it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
There's zero.
There's a hundred and twenty-seven, four-hundred.
Plenty of people saying, I, I, I mean, this is how I govern. Is by the people, and the people are telling us to terminate.
There's two-hundred-and-eleven acreages. We have a hundred and twenty signatures.
Pardon? Did I say something here? Well.
No.
Shortly.
In just a few minutes, we'll be done briefing, and then we'll open, open comment.
So, the two-hundred-and-eleven acreages, and we have a hundred and twenty signatures, there's people that are upset about it. Um, these people vote us in, I think there's something we need to do about it.
On the purpose of this discussion, bring up ideas that we're gonna have conversations in the city of Carroll. And, you know, we can have all these on there, and whether they're all gonna agree with us on that, or we're gonna compromise on something, that remains to be seen. But I think we need, what we're after is to get discussion points, to, to meet with them, and see what we can accomplish.
If we can come up with a compromise that is truly agreeable, then that's obviously the best course of action. It's just that everything that I have heard from those that want it to go away is all of it. And, and if we can, if, if we can, if we can actually come up with something that would be agreeable to most everybody, that's fine. But I really, as much as I would like to see that, I was telling somebody the other day about compromise. Compromise is always wonderful, wonderful. We always compromise with our wives. We just say yes. But, you know, she wants to paint the room red, I wanna paint it blue. And so we say, alright, let's meet in the middle, paint it purple. We both hate it. You know, so nobody wins with compromise. It's like, I mean, if, if we can, and I would remain hopeful and prayerful that that could happen, but I see there's only one of two options, and that's either to stay it or to terminate it. And where I'm leaning as of today, and again, I've said this before, you guys can all wait till you get somebody else sitting in this seat. It's gotta live with the consequences, because I'm gonna gotta live with it for three or four months. But, um, in conversations with him, I think it's comfortable to say that he doesn't feel much differently than I do, but I would certainly let him speak on his own come November eleventh.
I, I agree with you. Um, you know, I wanna go down to the half-mile, just like I've shown you on this map, it's a, it's a disaster. You're all not out. And I do it on the city, but, um, I guess you could draw it around parcels, you know? I don't think it's fair to cut through someone's parcel, but I could be wrong.
Well, no matter what, it's, what was the measurements that you said? That I really stayed.
Quarter.
Quarter mile, yeah.
So that never goes away?
No.
We have a consensus. I can take notes, and that is, we'll move forward with this discussion.
We have a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've heard half-mile, mile, hundred percent gone.
Well.
I do like the two-mile joint councils, where we have for sure skin in the game.
I do too. I like it. It's just, I'm not sure it's.
If we're going away with the two-mile all in general, then obviously that's.
I wanna be clear, but I mean, if we can work out a compromise, that's great. But my point is, is if we cannot, then that's where I would stay. If you wanna do it for November eleventh, I don't care.
Who's all in favor of a two-mile joint council? Scored one there.
Yeah.
Who's, who's in favor of, uh, three supervisors, two city council?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's our first proposal. Now, we need to propose the mileage.
Same, one mile.
Well, don't say we can do that. Let's shoot for what you're proposing, cut the back of my, what you're proposing.
That's what I proposed.
Let's shoot for that. We, we may have made, you have compromised on that too. Maybe we can get more. I don't know. I mean, I think it's a discussion about your mountain, the borders.
I just showed you they control twenty-eight point five miles, and their footprint's six point five. I think that's a little over governance here.
I mean, we start with a mile. I, I have no problem with that, but I think we need to recognize maybe it would be different factors too.
I just don't know how you can pick the winners and losers in that, well, I don't.
You don't, because some are gonna be happy, some are.
I mean, a quarter-mile is a given. So we're talking about three-quarters of a mile here, folks.
So what do you, what do you recommend, draw through, or what's your recommendation?
Well, Mark says to go a hundred percent away from the two-mile.
Yeah, that's, I mean, again, I, if, if, if you could work out a compromise, and if it's four to one, work out a compromise, and the compromise is amenable to the folks that are not very pleased with the way it is, then I would certainly support that, absolutely support that. I just don't find that very highly likely.
And the, the only reason I don't support your decision is because the city's not gonna go with that.
But if you go, I, I found the right agreement, by the way, and it reads the same way.
Okay.
And, and again.
Okay.
I will defer to wiser than me, because
County Attorney.
That's just about everybody in this room, I promise you that. That's not false, you know, that it is real. But it clearly says that unless dissolved by ordinance or resolution of either the city or the county.
Well, I, I think you're gonna have a hard time finding everybody's agreement on any of this. There's gonna be some.
No, but if we have a five-person board that comes to them, obviously, we want some changes. We have a hundred and twenty people, registered people that sign that people are speaking, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm saying, we wanna, we wanna make some change, but I don't know if we're gonna make enough changes to that.
Okay, we won't, never.
So we gotta do our best, Eric.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, I'd go along with one mile.
Yeah, I don't even know if I consider miles, not quite a mile and everything, but it's just straight lines. Falls roads.
Well, they're good.
It's less than a mile, mostly.
You follow the road, you do a circle, you know, I'd prefer to keep on it. Four mile. Bubble.
Yeah, that's even worse.
No, but I'm saying, would it be a one-mile bubble?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think I have our consensus, maybe not so much area. But I think we need to have that conversation with the city, to see how they're feeling, the city council. If we feel like we're not gonna get anywhere, then we're definitely gonna go with making a board, um, a twenty-two mile board that puts three supervisors, two city council members, if an application.
And I, I would prefer the supervisors not to live in the town, the city limits of Carroll.
However, he would be the three outliers.
So it wouldn't even be appointed, really?
Well, just me.
By your district.
Two, three.
Now, the only thing that can happen with that is we gotta be a little careful, because if, uh, state legislation changes our.
I know.
But that, that's going out.
So what you're saying is.
Two, three, it would be two. It'd always be district two, three, and four. It wouldn't be district one.
Three represents city of Carroll.
There's a sliver.
A little. Majority of yours is cities.
I just wanted.
The majority of I is city, the majority of one is city, but two, three.
Most likely.
Three does.
Sure, northwest part of the city, district three.
Mine does.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not three though.
No, two.
Okay.
But two does, two does. There's a little sliver of it.
Yeah, two.
One and five in majority city.
Yeah, in Tyler.
So do you guys feel good with those bullet points that I made? That's kind of what we're gonna go with? Okay. We'll open it up to a public comment for five minutes, if anybody wants to make a comment.
Five minutes at a time, or?
We'll just kind of play it by ear, but as you, if you want to speak, please state your name, so we know who you are and identify.
And writers.
And. Yes, sir.
I'm Merle Holmes. I live in Northwood Town. Um, I guess my question is, uh, I moved over here in, uh, two thousand ninety-five, or one, nineteen ninety-five. Uh, when did, and why did this change? It, it changed before I came here, I take it, but why did it change in the first place?
I was playing with conca trucks and they, no. I wasn't even here in nineteen eighty-four.
That's when this originated, nineteen eighty-four, and then there was.
I think, I think it was basically, they were concerned about zoning an outline area for expansion. Particularly, I think that was back when Carroll was kind of having a little, ever industrial movement. So I think they were making sure there was enough.
But if there is a quarter-mile anyway, and it grows, why, why would they have to go two miles?
And the city grew, that, I think in a, as a state holder, there was other communities that were doing it that way. That's when I think Glidden also did it, but there's other, like, she, she did the research on it. There's more communities that have done that back at that time, not necessarily two-mile, maybe a mile, different, different lengths. But there was a movement back in that time to get more expansion than just that quarter-mile.
I guess, I guess my problem is, and I'm sure everybody in here is the same fine. Okay, the city's telling us what we gotta do. We, we cannot voice our opinion to vote for on the city council, and they're the people that are telling us what we gotta do. Now, what's wrong, what's wrong with that?
Correct.
I mean, uh, how many in here would, would put up with that? I mean, you guys wouldn't. I don't know why you would.
Well, and I think that's why, part of the reason we were trying to get this, uh, appeal process for that. Uh, if you have an issue with a building permit, you'd be able to have another process of appeal, other than just. That's the reason we're doing it.
You know, I, I'm not applying for a building permit. Mine's already established, but you know, there's, they're still running me, and if, if somebody or something, they wanna do something there in the town that spends my tax dollars, that they're telling me what I gotta pay, and I don't have a voice to say yes or no.
You don't, you don't pay taxes to the city. Taxes have nothing to do, that's what most people are skewed about. And if you live in the two-mile, you do not pay city taxes.
What, what's that, Mike?
If you live in the two-mile, you do not pay city taxes. That's the whole reason, like, you don't get a.
No, I understand that, if there's tax, there's our tax dollars going to the city. No, no, no.
No.
So, in other words, I gotta come to the city. So, in other words, I gotta come to the city, get a building permit, I write a check out to the city of Carroll.
There you go.
That's a building.
That's a permit, not a tax. Okay, now we got an only instant.
That's a permit too.
Yeah, it's a permit, I understand that, but it's still my money that went to the city of Carroll offers. Yep. Correct? Yeah, just not a tax. Just wanna make that correct.
It's not a tax, correct.
We're clear here.
One more time. Okay, they tell me that I'm in the city. I go out to the muni, I wanna join the muni. You don't say I'm out of town.
You don't pay city taxes.
You don't pay.
Again, it's the same thing on here, you don't.
Rec center and the golf course.
You don't pay city taxes, you pay county taxes.
They run in the red, and you're not responsible for that, whereas the people of city are. It runs, they both run in the red.
John, what if you have a business in the city?
You and I talked about that, and I agree with that. Then, you still have to pay the extra dues. And I agree with that.
Yeah, I didn't understand that years ago, and they jumped on me.
Your building does, right.
That is not right, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to ask one question. This, I'm gonna straighten, this twenty-eight, you agree. What is in it for us in the two mile area? One thing, what's in it for us? What do we gain from it? What's that?
Well, you said that the inspections, if you have the state do it, you wait a long, long time for them to come and inspect. And if the, the city does it, it's better, that's the only benefit I could think of, if you were like, trying to.
Good point, John.
But if you're building anything, it doesn't affect your day-to-day life, there is no. The city's not overreaching on day-to-day life, this is only if you are getting ready to construct something new.
Well, we're doing it, that, that, that's all it is. We don't want that. And, to your point, Mike, I wanted to bring up that we have a hundred and twenty-one signatures in there. That was from one meeting that you attended, right? Okay, since then, now, if you want me to canvass it again, and there's a couple people in this room that. Helped me canvas for that. Since then, that was back in, I think, the end of March. Since then, I have gotten probably another, another fifty that will sign that. That's out of a hundred and sev- I count the noses, that's out of a hundred and seventy-one people that live in the two mile area. So I have way overwhelming, uh, percentage. And the last time I checked, uh, go, the overwhelming percentage like that should rule this. Every one of the people that I talk to and that are on that petition are in your specific districts. Every one of them. So you are representing these people, these people don't want it. It's ninety percent. If you wanna dispute those numbers, I'll give them for it. It might take me a while, now, we was gonna have a meeting, again, in Litterdale, sometime this month. To discuss this again. We don't want no boards, I've talked to these people out here, I've asked these specific questions, they're way ahead of us. And they've all said, no, we don't wanna be, we don't want any boards, we don't want anybody telling us what to do about here. We want this agreement resolved. We can't, we still have zone. Pardon?
The county had zoning too.
Yes, I understand that, they can have one, and that's fine, I have no problem with that.
Those are the differences are, other than the cost of a permit, the differences are the two setbacks.
And then. Yeah, we don't, we don't, and we're not, we're not disputing any of that. Right? If the state requires us to have a quarter mile for every city, I don't know, I can check. Because I've got people that can check that for me, that's fine. But anything outside of that, we're all in agreement here, this is a hundred percent here. You can bust or somebody that wants to dispute me. They are, and the last time I checked, majority ruled, that's, that's why we live in this country.
John Hattford here, I understand there's two of the board members that are against us, why? Isn't that right, two of yous feel like you shouldn't vote for it? I hear two of yous are for it. Is that, are yous all for it?
Who are you pointing at?
Uh, Gene and Scott, are yous for it or not?
I haven't, no, no decisions are being made.
I will say this, I think, I'm open regardless, I'm open to any discussion.
Okay, I get the feeling.
No, but I, I will tell you my point.
And yous two aren't, that's the feeling I get out here.
People aren't paying city tax, there's just several things that, they're just.
We also, you know, we still represent even the city of Carroll.
We just gotta be on, like.
But, uh, my point is that there's always a need for zoning regardless, somebody's gonna abuse somewhere along the line. I don't care if you're rural Iowa, or the city, or next to the city. And I think in, um, plain double that, where the city's, the reason why they were doing one of some of this. Is they have a little better control, so they ain't got helter-skelter, water and sewer and infrastructure put in. That costs so much on, you know, if they have them five hundred feet apart, or they got a hundred feet apart, there's a lot different thought. That's part of the reason why the city is reached out outside of that, and I, I can understand that. That's for their benefit, I mean, and to protect their interests. Uh, and I think it's also set out there for when Carroll was, they did have a lot of, uh. Industrial growth, and there's some coming back, I think, in a way it looks like. Uh, so it's, it's there to protect that, so they have that ability to, to have those industries move in this community. Uh, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to amending it. Do I think it needs some, some sort of thing needs to be in place? Yes. But I'm not opposed to doing some changing, and I said that originally from the beginning.
Okay, Gene, I understand that, and I, I got an agreement a lot of that. You know, but it's just like out here at Caterpillar. You want, you wanna, you want to, uh, annex that land out there, but Caterpillar, that's fine. I'm off, I'm off for that, that kind of growth, okay, then the city and Caterpillar make the decision, put the water and sewer out there. That has nothing to do with us. Whatever we're complaining about is.
Okay, look at the blue ring on our house. Part of the other problem that you got, is look at all these little residential areas you gotta build up around Carroll. That's what's gonna be the problem for the city of Carroll someday, is providing for them when they become annex. They have to, if they provide for one, they gotta provide for all of that.
So in other words, farmer wants to sell me five acres of land in this two mile area, they can't do it? Or are they gonna do it under, under the city pretenses?
That's part of the reason why they made it five acres, like, just they didn't do it every quarter.
Yeah, I under- yeah, that's right.
And there's subdivision.
That's right, and we, and we.
There's also subdivision rules out there with, with, on the county ordinance as well.
I understand that.
The county does have five acres as well.
Yeah, that's right, and, and we, have we not agreed with that?
There's not a lot of differences.
We haven't, we've agreed with that, we've agreed with everything that the county has done. Up until this point, and, and this inspection, now, now you guys. And, and the city is also. I'll look it up right here.
Yep, Gary, I'm gonna give you one more minute, and we do have to keep our meeting moving.
You guys, you guys have caused discrimination out here. And if, and if you want, I'll, I'll, I'll give you all the people that you've discriminated against. Now, you wanna ask me why, how you did that? Because in ninety-four, the disagreement was approved by the city and the county. Up until the warrant that problem, I'll bring it up, cause it's gonna get brought up. There was very few, if any, go get, go to the inspection department, look it up, in the city. No inspections were being done. And then all of a sudden, this warrant that problem brought up, and now you're, you're expecting to put a window in, put a door in your house. Put a new roof on it. That's discrimination, people. And I can also show you some harassment problems.
Okay, we are gonna go ahead and close this discussion now.
Can I make, uh, one statement here, shortly? Um, I'm a resident of Carroll County, with my entire life. I've lived in the two mile radius since nineteen eighty. And, uh, my biggest problem has always been that the city controls us. But we don't get a vote in elections, and can't hold city office. Which is, I think, taxation without representation. Uh, as far as the city council's concerned, we've approached the city council on a number of things. And they've never been attuned to our wishes. Uh, and as far as you guys think, and you can deal with, with the city council.
No.
They are not gonna give up any power without being forced. Uh, and as far as Mark is concerned about her, his, uh, question about the either. And his statement of dissolving this, uh, if it's like the city, you can take it for your board of adjustment or a ruling. On them to tell you what that either means. The, the board of adjustment has the power to tell you if it means both or one.
This, this is the twenty-eighty agreement, sir.
Right.
But, but you have a board of adjustment, right? No, th- this is the actual document that binds the agreement with city of Carroll. Okay, this has nothing to do with a variance or board of adjustment, I'm talking about the agreement itself.
But what you were talking is you weren't sure whether either meant that, either you could dissolve it. Or it takes a joint venture.
No, it clearly says by either.
Either.
Yeah, I have, I have no question about it.
One or the other, either or.
Right, that's, I think we're on the same page.
But I think you need a clarification, if you have a board of adjustment, take it to them and let them rule on the meaning of that either.
Okay, we, we are talking two different.
Yeah, we, we talked to county attorney on that, and the county attorney decided it was bold.
To make changes or to do anything if we wanna make adjustments, it was to.
That's what he advised.
I'm talking the actual document.
Yeah, I know, I know you're reading it, I think there, we have no problem checking with, with the county attorney. And if we can make a resolution, we'll make a resolution, or whatever the board feels like going forward. But it does have to be certified by a resolution. Okay. Item number six, maneuver management annual updates. Falcon Finisher Farms, section thirty-six, Arcadia Township, no changes. D and P Farms Incorporated, section twenty-six, and these township.
No changes on both.
And so sorry, D and P was in the. And now to committee round.
You guys doing any different directions? Mine's the shortest one, I had no official committee reports. Uh, other than I attended the seismic, dusting demo on Thursday, and the city, uh, TIP consultation about the ECO. Parked on Thursday, and it's, it's all straight.
Last week, Monday, I had newspaper radio, Tuesday, I made contact with Mary Woodtree about board adjustment. Wednesday, I did talk to Zach, I had commented during the open house about getting sliding doors or something, hiding mess in the jury deliberation room. So looking at getting quotes, I did go to the assessors last day, hire my party gathering, move slide. Thursday, I did go to seismic testing, I think, there were several of us there. Um, I went to state auditor, Rob Sands, at Southside Park. I did get some information on Thursday about, um, for the access DC trip upcoming, about the cost. Um, of removing that four trees and all the county parks and the cost to replant them. Friday, I went with a deputy and we did go down to Concord and Birch, look at the dust control. And we moved the road closed side again at three hundred and thirty first. Um, this week, tomorrow, except I have a meeting at eight thirty regarding solar, um, noon is CCGP. With Jennifer Quickly from New Hope, Wednesday at ten o'clock, HIPAA training, annual refresher. Thursday will be roads, payables, and Friday courthouse climbs. Last.
Last week, I did a border health meeting Tuesday, uh, Thursday, I did the police.
Seismic testing.
There you go. Seismic testing, this week I got nothing on schedule, Friday, I did much two mile work.
Okay, uh, Thursday, went to the seismic demo, got my glue. And then also went to Rob Sands Town Hall, Town Hall meeting. And then I, uh, sent you guys the maps of the new HHS maps. Had a lot of different old conversations regarding that. Again, none of the situations, we're never gonna make everybody happy. This week, I have CCGP, and also policy council Tuesday night. Wednesday was the annual HIPAA refresher, and then Thursday, I have highway thirty to finish.
Last week, I spent very much time out at secondary roads, discussing a couple of different projects that might be happening in Carroll County. Then I spent time in the assessor's office, G I, G I S and P and Z, and then I also got to go to the ambulance department. Have a conversation with Jamie in reference to the ambulance board and the future in the direction we want to see that go. This week, I have newspaper radio, Republican, I had the Republican meeting. I will have a solar energy meeting tomorrow morning, and then I will be kind of MIA Tuesday and Wednesday for a family funeral. And then I will be reviewing our payables towards the end. Courtney, what do you have?
I have the full day next Monday, and I forgot my planner. Stairs, so as far as I know, just the bill day next week, uh, do you have anything coming up this week?
No. That's coming to mind, apparently, no, but no, I, I left my planner at home, but I don't think so.
Any comment from those on the agenda?
Look.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So.
All of the favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, closed.